Thank you for joining us for the County Commission meeting this evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board's desk? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any issues voted on by the board at our meeting this evening. Okay, I have an announcement on parking validation. Parking validation and bus passes are now available for commission workshops and meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from security on their way out. That's valid for today only. We now come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We now come to public comment. And we have a, one person that has signed up for public comment. And so we'll call on this person and then after they go, if anyone else is interested in speaking during public comment, you're welcome to do so. Let me just read our procedures. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. And do we have the, we don't have like the lights down here, do we?
My phone and I also have a giddy game time.
Okay. All right, Sarah will tell you when you got one minute left and then Sarah will let us know when the time is up. And we do ask that you discontinue your public comment. Once your time's up, we want to give everyone the same amount of time to speak. All right. And is it, last name is Phillips, signed up to speak? Yeah. You're welcome to come up, come up to the podium. That's fine, sure, go ahead. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your service to the community. This is somewhat of a continuum from last week and an unresolved issue from a long time ago. We're still suggesting a moratorium on new construction, renovate as many solid structures, vacant buildings as possible, rather than try to match new available beds to how many homeless people there are, and affordable housing units for how many minimum wage jobs you need for hospitality, tourism, and other businesses. The unresolved issue of the handout that I gave you, my family's life became very complicated around 2000. We were contacted by the United States Forestry Service wanting our mountaintop for the Appalachian Trail. $50,000 was agreed upon verbally by Dan Bellinger for 16.27 acres as an easement. And when we got there, we were greeted by a man who had no name tag, no ID, didn't give his name. It was on September 12th, 2001. He turned that $20,000, he turned that into a $20,000 for sale, he said was good for one hour. He claimed to be with the United States Justice Department. This was over in the Agriculture Forestry Building over by the college. The document I hand you has several problems. One, the date has been changed to September 14th. You can tell it's a different type set or a different font size. And he basically told me, I said, how can we do this in an hour? My mom's not here. He said, you'll sign for her. I said, I wasn't told to do that. My father ended up signing on the line that had her name to the agreement. But that gentleman from the Justice Department, his name doesn't appear on this agreement. It's signed by someone from agriculture like a month later in November. So I would have expected that office to be completely full and active on September 12th, 2001, and it was very quiet. There was almost no one there. Tourist destinations are going to have more challenges than the college towns like Mars Hill, Madison County with agriculture and small populations. My family would like to try to help you. We are definitely related to that Biltmore estate. I do have a resume and I've been educated with hospitality, education, healthcare, and some other things that might be beneficial. I'm not sure what help we could be. But we do still encourage you to celebrate world peace now for a month, September 19th through October 19th. Try to set the worldwide record on recreational and sporting events. Moratorium on war, try to encourage our government to return all POWs, starting with military, intelligence, and journalists. Then we help everyone else. We rebuild the infrastructure, beginning with the dams and the bridges. I would be happy to meet with you in closed doors for more sensitive information. My family is under national security classified and the rest of the information will not be pertinent for a public open comment this time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak during public comments? Thank you. All right, we have one item under good news, which is recognizing that the Buncombe County Health and Human Services Economic Services Team won the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Excellence in Innovation Award. And Heather Ramsey is here to share some more information about this accomplishment.
Hey there. Yeah, just taking a few minutes to recognize this team and the work that they've done. So it was a couple of years in the making, but our team created this wonderful website where we take our content, really heavy library of over 200 courses. And to begin with, it was kind of a journey for us to put our materials on our own website so our staff could get there. But really what we realized is that we have this unique ability to share this information statewide. So when we posted on this community SharePoint site, now any county that does not have a training team, does not have the resources to travel for training, reach out. They ask us for access and since we put this in place, we have granted access to about 70% of the counties in North Carolina. So such huge impact, not just for our staff, but for really hundreds across the state. Any questions?
Well, I just want to say it was wonderful when they were recognized and it was done at our North Carolina Association County Commissioners Conference. And so it has, it's impacted around 70 other counties as well as state agencies, I believe, are utilizing this source as well. So people are very appreciative of what our staff are doing to impact the county governments across the state. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have several presentations and proclamations. And the first one is a proclamation recognizing August 1st through 7th as World Breastfeeding Week. And Commissioner Parker Sloan is going to read the proclamation.
Good evening. World Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through 7th. Whereas families are a priority in Buncombe County and part of helping them thrive is ensuring they receive community support to develop and sustain healthy lifestyles. And whereas according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, American Academy of Family Physicians, and other leading health organizations, breastfeeding is the optimal food for infants. And whereas a mother's decision to breastfeed her baby should be supported by her family and community. And whereas breastfeeding is associated with lower rates of childhood illness, such as obesity, diabetes, and infectious diseases, as well as, as well as less maternal breast and ovarian cancers and diabetes, and a faster recovery from childbirth as compared to formula feeding. And whereas breastfeeding promotes maternal infant bonding and benefits the entire family and is associated with lifelong health and development. Whereas collaborating with healthcare providers and community resources can positively impact breastfeeding success. And whereas breastfeeding protects the environment, which will preserve the beauty of the mountains and waterways. And whereas a breastfeeding friendly community encourages families of all races and ethnicities to continue breastfeeding by providing a supportive and welcoming environment. And whereas Buncombe County was a proud participant in Latch Asheville and the Buncombe County Breastfeeding Coalition at its August 3 community event. And whereas recognizing the persistent inequities in our community's birth outcomes, whereas black babies in Buncombe County are nearly 2.4 times as likely to die in the first year of life as white babies, a breastfeeding friendly community could be an antidote to tragedy and a strategy toward advancing equitable birth outcomes in Buncombe County. And whereas the World Alliance for Breastfeeding Action is dedicated to the protection, promotion, and support of breastfeeding worldwide with the annual international observance of World Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through 7th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners declares the county of Buncombe to be a breastfeeding family friendly community. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. On the behalf of the Buncombe County Breastfeeding Coalition, we thank the county commissioners for your continued support in making Buncombe County a breastfeeding friendly community. Our coalition continues to work to bring awareness regarding the benefits of breastfeeding and the importance of creating safe spaces and environments to help support parents in their breastfeeding journey. We welcome anyone who has an interest in joining or would like to know more about the coalition to please reach out and thank you for your time.
All right. The next proclamation is proclaiming August 26th to 30th as Smart Week. And Amanda Edwards will read the proclamation and Mary Gordon is here to accept it.
County of Buncombe proclamation for Smart Week, August 26th through 30th, 2024. Whereas guns are the number one killer of children and teens in the United States. And whereas Buncombe County is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and wellbeing of our children. And whereas almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the United States. And whereas research shows that one of the best ways to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. Whereas research shows that the most effective way to prevent children from accessing firearms is making sure all guns are stored unloaded, locked, and separate from ammunition. And whereas there are steps we can all take, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, to make sure kids can't access guns and put themselves and others in danger. And whereas an estimated 54% of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely. And an estimated 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun in the United States. And whereas when guns aren't properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it's a child finding a firearm, an injuring or killing themselves or someone else, or someone stealing it and using it to commit a crime in our communities. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is one of the Board of Commissioners' highest responsibility. And whereas schools, hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to their crucial role in reducing injury and death by promoting gun, secure gun storage and safety. And whereas Smart Week raises awareness and promotes efforts to educate the public about secure gun storage, Buncombe County commends Be Smart, a program developed by the Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund and all involved in their endeavor to keep communities safe. Therefore be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners declare August 26th through 30th to be Smart Week in Buncombe County. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
On behalf of our Be Smart team here in Asheville, I want to thank you very much. We are trying our hardest to get out into the public and the school systems. We have developed a relationship, partnership with Asheville City Schools. We would like to take that into the Buncombe County schools as well. And we have started now getting into a lot of our doctors' offices. And we've been partnering across the community, delivering our message and providing gun lots to people that do not have one if they need one to make sure that their firearms are secured securely. Thank you very much.
Okay. The last presentation is an update for the Board of the Tourism Development Committee. Vic Isley is here to give the presentation. Vic Isley is here to give the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully we'll have a, there we go, bang, bang, just after Smart, making sure you have your guns secured. Good evening. I'm Vic Isley, President and CEO for Explore Asheville and the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority. Thank you for some time this evening to update you on our efforts on behalf of the community. For more than four decades, the authority has had a long and proud legacy of investing in and building community. In North Carolina, the lodging tax is designed to grow the local economy, and our organization was created to generate economic development through tourism. And this is a vital role for our community. While destination marketing and investment is shouldered 100% by the lodging tax paid by visitors in Buncombe County, 70% of visitor spending takes place outside of lodging businesses in restaurants and breweries, retail shops and galleries, with tour outfitters and transportation providers throughout the county. This virtuous cycle is what makes travel such an economic powerhouse, job creator, community builder, for Asheville, Buncombe County, the state of North Carolina, and the United States. As you all know, our five strategic imperatives ladder up to broader community goals, including the county's strategic plan. When the authority adopted these pillars three years ago, we committed that they would guide the direction of Explore Asheville's programming and investments going forward. They're intended to inform how we do the work on behalf of the community here. So back in 1983, when the authority was created, visitors brought just over $82 million into Buncombe County businesses. Through investment and promotion over the last four decades, that spending has grown 35 times to just under $3 billion last year in 2023. For the last two years, Buncombe County has ranked third in all of North Carolina for visitor spending, behind Mecklenburg County, which is where Charlotte is, and on the heels of Wake County, where Raleigh is. So we, as a community, are punching above our weight in terms, in terms of the tourism economic benefits to our community. In 2023, visitors contributed nearly $3 billion to our community and local businesses. And the authority's role is to inspire visitors to bring net new dollars into our community through the front door of local businesses, and a wide variety of them to boot. This really sustains the livelihoods of our residents and businesses. Nearly 2,000 Explore Asheville partner businesses and organizations both serve and benefit from guests to our community. We are truly grateful for their partnership and role in delivering quality experiences and services to customers every single day. A county of 270,000 residents can't solely support the creativity of our community without the expenditures of people from outside it. Our neighbors, residents, artists, and area businesses rely on visitors to help support their livelihoods. And in turn, spending in our community supports wages for our residents and fuels property, sales, and income tax for city and county government revenues to operate public services for all of our residents. For more than a decade, Explore Asheville has been working with tourism economics and Visit North Carolina to measure the benefits of visitors to our community. Last week, we unveiled the 2023 visitor data. So visitors generated that record-breaking $2.97 billion in 2023, which is a slight increase of 3% from the $2.88 billion generated in 2022. Now, $3 billion equates to about 20% of Buncombe County's total annual economy. For the first time, tourism-generated income for our residents exceeded $1 billion, when including direct and induced impacts. And visitors supported about 29,000 jobs in 2023, which is one in every seven county jobs for our residents. 265 million in state and local tax revenues were generated by the visitor economy. Now Buncombe County households would need to pay an additional $2,600 in annual taxes to replace that visitor-generated taxes received by state and local governments. So visitor spending represents about 20% of Buncombe County's GDP, and it generates one in every $5 in city and county government revenues, supported by the visitor economy. And one way the Explore Asheville team bolsters the economic vitality is through our business development and group sales efforts. In recent years, we've been doing this with more purpose and meaning. We've partnered with our friends at the Economic Development Coalition and aligned our proactive group sales efforts with targeted business sectors to help diversify our economy, such as outdoor products, advanced manufacturing. So we use business travel as the front porch of economic development to help in that diversification of the economy. So last year, that business development team worked with lodging partners to confirm nearly 400 groups that will spend $50 million directly into our community. Now here are just a few examples of how this is really starting to bear fruit for our community at large. In June, we hosted the Adventure Elevate in the outdoor industry space. We had over 300 people attend from 40 different states and four different countries. Over half of them had never been here before. So we expect those folks and tour operators to really support our outdoor industry and tour operators. In July, we had ESIP, which is in climate and environment, thinking about sustainability and being the headquarters of NOAA here. And this is the power of partnership in our resident base here, is that the Chair of the National Wildlife Federation Board of Directors lives here and wanted to bring their board here. So their national board meeting will be held here in Asheville in November, and we were happy to partner with them to make that happen. So we'd love to enlist you in this joint effort, and some of you around the commissioners' table have sent us leads and provided us with group opportunities. But if residents or folks here in the room are involved in an association, or a board, or have your, your own organization that you want to bring a meeting home here, our team is ready and available to be of assistance in hotel leads, off-site venues, and experiences to really make that shine. So two, since 2001, the Tourism Development Authority has been a collaborative partner in investing in community capital projects, from parks, greenways, and sports facilities, to performing arts venues, museums, and cultural centers. The authority has committed more than $96 million to 51 different capital projects over the life of the funds. Now nearly 80% of those funds have gone to city or county government partners. So $4 million was awarded to the county's very important Ferry Road Affordable Housing Project through the inaugural Legacy Investment from Tourism Fund grant cycle this past year. $8.14 million was committed to the Woodfin Greenway Blue Way project currently underway in the French Broad River. And a total of $10.8 million has been invested in recreation destination since 2018. In December of 2023, a significant and long-awaited project was unveiled in Asheville, celebrating the dignity, humanity, and agency of black people from all backgrounds who built a resilient community and fostered social change here in Asheville and Buncombe County. Between 2018 and 2023, Explore Asheville and the authority funded and managed the creation of the Asheville Black Cultural Heritage Trail in partnership with the Riverfront Development Group and a 19-member community advisory group. The self-guided interpretive trail comprises 14 stops and 20 panels spread across three historically significant black neighborhoods. And if you haven't had the opportunity to take the trail, we really encourage you to do so. We're grateful for the many voices, memories, and stories that were shared to make this experience possible for residents and visitors alike. Phase two of this project is now underway and invites local BIPOC creatives to enhance the trail through public art. So thank you for your time this evening to hear more about the work of our team on behalf of our collective community. We appreciate the partnership with the county, and we look forward to supporting our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vic. Okay. We have one public hearing this evening to consider the schedule of values for the 2025 revaluation, and Keith Miller is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is the second step in the process. As you remember, the last meeting, that was before we presented to you the schedule of values for your consideration and your review. The North Carolina General Statute 105317 outlines the schedule in which this must go through adoption. Tonight is step number two, is that we must hold a public hearing for the public. This has been properly advertised, and we are ready to move forward with the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
So let's open the public hearing at 5:35 PM. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment during the public hearing? All right. We'll close the public hearing at 5:36 PM.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. County Manager's Report.
The report, sir.
Okay. There are no items under old business, so we go to new business. The first item is consideration of a resolution adopting and a budget amendment to accept the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Housing Program grant to support Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministries and expanding Transformation Village. And Victoria Reischer is here to help us out with the thought. Thanks for being here, Victoria.
Good afternoon, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. Good to be in front of you all again with some updates around the Recovery Housing Program. I'm going to give a quick review about our, what this grant was about, what happened with our application, if you're not picking up what's happening, but, and then what our next steps are, and then ask for you all to consider those board actions. This is a CDBG, a Community Development Block Grant, that is through the federal U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and being administered by NC Commerce Rural Economic Division. And a lot of the elements within this application was around helping folks that are unhoused or having in recovery from substance use services to have housing and to really support them and becoming independent. And so there's opportunities with a local provider that we'd submitted our application for. There is a requirement for this housing that is funded to meet affordability requirements, not less than 20 years. We also have some deadlines on being able to expend these funds and complete all the documentations and, and processes that are happening. And so with that application, we had partnered with Land of Sky and Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministries to support the expansion of their Transformation Village by constructing a four-story, 64-unit building, with 32 of those units being dedicated to women and mothers with children in recovery from substance use. So we are excited to have been offered this opportunity to, again, to partner with our community partners to expand this housing opportunity. And so part of this agreement, we need to satisfy some funding approval conditions. One of those is for you all to say yes, we would like to accept these funds, and also some other documentation that we will be reviewing, putting together. And just to give you a sense of, we're looking at being able to obligate all of the funds to have a plan on how to spend all of them with a contractor by '26, and they hope to expend all those funds by '27. So hopefully, we will have a in-working process building by 2027. And so with this, we are asking for you all to adopt the resolution to accept the Recovery Housing Program funds, and for us to enter into an interlocal agreement with Land of Sky to be those, that grant administrator. And then also, as part of that, is adopting the budget amendment. So please let me know if you all have any questions.
Well, thank you for this partnership, and I'm excited to see this move forward. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to accept the Recovery Housing Program funds and enter into the interlocal agreement with Land of Sky and adopt the budget amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is consideration of a resolution to apply for the DWI Task Force funding from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. And I think, is Lynn Smith here?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So good to see you all today. Manager Pender. I'm here on behalf of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, coming to you regarding the DWI Task Force FY25 funding. And before we can proceed, we just want to ask your permission to approve the resolution and the agreement of conditions for that particular grant. Any questions?
I'm just curious, so just going forward, it'll always be this 25% or 75% for the county and 25%?
If we, the sheriff has an expressed interest in, in proceeding, but if we do, that would be the case, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lynn, did you say that he has not yet expressed?
He's not indicated yet.
For, for the following year?
Yeah. That's correct.
And are there any particular conditions you would call our attention to, or anything in particular we should be aware of in terms of conditions of accepting the funds?
No, not, none. We have the funding set aside for the match already budgeted for FY2025, so I don't have any concerns.
And I'm just curious, do you have any updates on the DWI Task Force that you can share with us?
Not that I can share. We get, we prepare data every year, and we just haven't gotten all of our data from the officers yet. So once we do, I'll be happy to forward that information on to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We'll make a motion to approve the resolution and agreement of conditions.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Lynn. All right. The third item is consideration of a budget amendment and approval for contract for the 200 College Street renovation project. John Hudson's here to help us out.
Good evening. This budget amendment closes the existing fiscal year 22 administration building envelope repair and combines that budget of $2,458,869 into the fiscal year 24 200 College Street renovation project, which also includes interior renovation of the second floor. This will compensate for overages related to problems in the envelope repair that were discovered after testing and allow for funding of the contract for repair at $2,959,000 to stone restoration. The total budget for 200 college renovation is now $4,958,869. No new county funding is required.
Is there a motion to support this proposal? Second. We have a motion and second in support of the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, John. All right. We have several board appointments to take care of. On the TDA, there's one appointment. This is for the position for the owner-operator of a facility with 100 or fewer units. There are three applicants, and I've heard support for doing interviews with these applicants. So if that sounds good to everyone, we can go ahead and schedule those.
But the third is our next meeting, does that sound appropriate?
Let's look at our schedules real quick. So we will have an affordable housing meeting at 1 o'clock that day, I believe, and maybe there's early childhood education too.
Maybe 17. What time are your meetings?
1 to 2:30. So we have three applicants, so it'll take about 30 minutes. We could, we could do noon, or we could do 2:30. Any preferences?
I'd be okay with 2:30 if you, what do y'all think?
Is that all right? We may just be, we'll just try to stay on track, so if we're a minute or two late for the briefing meeting.
Do you all like that meeting?
It's just right, right next door. So we should be, doing 2:30 to 3:00 should work well. As long as we stay focused, we'll start our briefing meeting on time. Sound good?
2:30, 3:00, and it's during a briefing, we'll also be here.
Sounds good. All right. Okay. We also have the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. There's We also have the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. There's three reappointments. A move that we reappoint, Taylor Cox, Suzanne Booth, and Greg Zornz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have Health and Human Services Board, five reappointments.
I'm moved that we reappoint Casey Metcalf, Martha Salyers, Greg Narin, Elizabeth Lima, and Amy Leno.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we now have the Short-Term Rental Ad-Hoc Committee appointment to make. So we did a bunch of interviews with folks who have applied to serve on the STR ad hoc group. I think we had a hundred-and-twenty people apply for this committee. So obviously, it's a topic of significant community interest, and we had just, you know, a really terrific, I mean, I just would, I just want to really express like how much I appreciate like the detail and thought people put into their applications. People really have, obviously, many people in our community have thought a lot about this really important topic, and there's a lot of different perspectives, and I think a lot of folks recognize that, you know, it's not a simple issue, but it's one that's important to the future of our community. So we interviewed about a dozen of those folks earlier today, and based on our resolution we adopted, we have, we need to appoint a group of people between nine to eleven individuals that represent a variety of perspectives, including people from the real estate community, individuals who are owners or operators of short-term rentals, folks who represent concerns around how the STR issue is affecting the housing market in Buncombe County. We also want to have someone who represents the perspective of a business owner or manager of an ancillary business, ancillary to the STR industry, as well as a kind of community-at-large perspectives. We're also going to appoint two members of the Buncombe County Planning Board, and the two members who applied, one is the Chair Nancy Waldrop, and the other, who was?
Ken Khan.
Ken Khan is the other planning board member. So we didn't interview those folks, because they will be appointed, I'd say were the two who applied. And then we're also going to appoint two county commissioners who will serve in an active, but non-voting role on the ad hoc committee. All right. So based on the interviews and discussions earlier today, and the Commissioners had a chance to kind of discuss further after the interviews were complete, here's the list that I would, I think represents the, the perspective of the board in terms of who we want to appoint. Matt Lutz, who represents real estate perspective, real estate, he's a Realtor. Chris Joyell, who is representing housing concerns. M.E., and help me if I missed my notes. LaRae?
Gray.
Gray. I'm reading Terry Wells's handwriting, and it's very distinctive. Gray, Emi Gray, who is, represents, it's like a kind of cursive that is, that will not survive in the future generations. Emi Gray. And also, real estate community person, Angela, Angelica Cote, who represents an ancillary business owner background. Andrea Holder, Holden?
Golden.
Golden, who also represents housing concerns. Kit Molina Newart, who is an STR owner-operator. Jay Gerlock, also real estate. He also has, and many of these folks who are from, they represent kind of multiple perspectives, but just in terms of each of these categories. Matt Allen, real estate. And Candace Metelski Brady, at-large. Okay, and then again, the two planning board members, Nancy Waldrop and Ken Khan, and then the two county commissioners, Commissioner Sloan and myself. All right. So again, just really great, I mean, I just learned a lot from just even listening to all the interviews today from folks. So appreciate everyone who's interested. It was not easy to narrow it down even to this smaller group. There's lots of other folks who brought great value and insights to it as well, and we hope will stay involved. Is further discussion, is there a motion to appoint this list?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Commissioners, those are all of the appointments we need to make. Are there any reports from boards and commissions that Commissioners serve on? All right, so we have a couple of announcements. August twenty-second, from nine to noon, at the Harris Cherokee Center, there's a specially-called joint meeting with the Asheville City School Board and Buncombe County School Board members with the Buncombe County Commission. August twenty-second, from one to four P.M. at the Harris Cherokee Center, there'll be another specially-called Strategic Plan Workshop session. September third, we will be back at two-hundred College Street for the briefing and regular meeting, the briefing at three P.M. and the regular meeting at five P.M. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.